I probably need to know more about that because that's a big factor here.
A good place for somebody to go to.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councilman Best just reminded me it's time to get started. So he did the official countdown. So, uh, welcome to the, uh, three o'clock work session of the mayor and council this, uh, what is today's date? March the 2nd, 2017. We'll delve right into the issues here and I'd like to welcome our interim city manager, Mike Jackson, on the end down here. Uh, Mike, uh, had a death in his immediate family. His wife's mother passed away, so we, our condolences to you, Mike, and your family during this time. So, uh, tab A, finance. Sarah?
Good afternoon.
Is that thing on?
Hello?
Seems like we get tired of asking that question.
Yeah, ask it a new one.
Low bidder.
No, you can't bend over the whole time. That's really uncomfortable.
All right, these are, this is a January financial update and, um, it's, it's not the best representation of the year since the first two months of the new year. Actually, a lot of our revenues and expenses get pushed back to the prior year. So if you're seeing zeros and holes, that could be part of it. Um, but I do think it's good to start looking at the, where we are so far in the year. So we'll get started. At the top, we have the general fund and our total cash right there, our operating cash at the end of January was $6.8 million. Uh, it is higher than what we've seen in some of the previous months because we did get all of our, um, property tax at the end of the year. So our unassigned fund balance, that's our reserve for the general fund, that is still our last audit number. That hasn't been updated. I'll update it once we get the 2016 numbers finalized, but we're at $6.3 million. Next, in the revenue section, this is where I was saying you might see some gaps here. It's because, um, anything that's attributable to the prior year will get booked back to that prior year. So, for instance, our loss, we haven't necessarily received anything attributable to 2017 yet, so anything for property tax. We have started receiving our occupational tax. Uh, we've received 10% of our budget, but it's less than what we saw last year. Um, I think that's just a timing difference. Going on to our general fund, our revenue and expense in total, you can see our total budget there for both is $11.9 million for revenue and expenditures. You can see the amount we've brought in year-to-date. Both are above where we were last year. And go on to the water sewer fund. Our total cash here, operating, it shows a negative. Again, we don't have a negative bank balance, but as part of the pool, our water sewer fund has a negative balance attributed to it. This is because in January, I believe we moved 600 million, uh, no, 100,000 or so for our debt service because we have a, a, a big payment at the end of February. So we went ahead and moved part of it in January to be ready for that. So that's why that number looks much larger than we normally see. Our investments, 2 million, that's a CD we have on the water sewer side, and then our outstanding bond principal and our, um, our reserve is 1.4 million. Again, that will be updated after our 2016 audit is complete. If you look down at our water and sewer sale, you can see our budget there, the 2.9 million for water sales and our sewer sales is $2.3 million expected. For both, we have received 4% of that budgeted amount and you can see both are slightly higher than last year. Overall, our water sewer fund revenue and expense are just over $7.1 million. And year-to-date, you can see we've received 3% of our revenue and 10, we've spent out 10% of our expense, which as you can see is much higher than what we had spent as of January of last year. But again, um, we did have our debt payment, so that's what that is. Solid waste, keep going down. Our cash, again, this is not a negative bank balance, but as part of our pool, it basically owes $300,000 to the general fund for that. And again, our equity is negative on that fund as well. Our solid waste fund, you can see the budget for the, the main revenue line is $863,000. We've received 33,000 of it. Slightly down less compared to last year. I think it's a timing difference. We get some money from Douglas County for what we bill out for them. Looking at our revenue and expense, we've received, um, 4% of our revenue for the year, which is slightly higher than last year. And our expense looks like it's higher than last year, but, um, I think it's a timing issue again. So January is hard to look at because it's just one month and there may be timing differences from the prior year. Any questions? Moving on, we'll start talking about the North Loop and Roundabout projects. At the end of last week, I'll wait till she pulls it up. At the end of last week, a group of the staff members met with several GDOT members and a representative from Kekinwood, who is actually here. Rick Gurney from Kekinwood is here, along with Grant Waldrop from GDOT. They are here if we need to ask them any questions. Uh, they were part of the meeting last week. So, um, as you all know, the North Loop project is in, in the works for several decades. The original agreement was signed in 1999. Uh, this new agreement that they're bringing forth, I believe it's the next item we'll talk about, it is to add the roundabouts. The engineering, GDOT will be handling the installation of the roundabouts. What the agreement, the updated agreement is adding for the reimbursement of the engineering for the roundabouts. So the city will be paying for that upfront. GDOT will be reimbursing us for that. That's the next item we'll get to. But this first one is, GDOT is asking us to, um, sign an agreement to handle the maintenance and repair of the lighting. That'll be part of the roundabouts. Um, we received a report from a senior design engineer who said there are typically 12 lights at each roundabout. So if we have two roundabouts, that'll be 24 lights. Maintenance costs would be replacing the LED lights, um, if we have any of the other electronic devices that go out. However, we also have to, you know, count for the possibility of a pole being knocked down, which they say on average would be $8,000 to repair. So when they look at it over the lifespan of about 24 years is what they expect for these lights. The average would be $2,000 for the city in total. Um, and that does include if there were three pole knockdowns during that time. So that would be coming out of our general fund maintenance and operations budget. We already pay for streetlights all around the city. Any questions on that?
Well, why would, we're gonna go ahead and say we're gonna knock three poles down, so just write $8,000 check?
No.
That's the worst-case scenario.
The worst-case scenario.
If they get, if, because of trying to figure out how much it's gonna cost to maintain it.
When we first saw the agreement, David Mecklen reviewed it and he said we needed to make sure that the council understood what the costs could be. So I'm coming at you with what the costs could be.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe we won't get the poles knocked down and we'll be good.
Sarah, you may have mentioned this, but that includes maintenance on the, on the lights as well, correct? Further questions, council? Great job, Sarah. Keep going.
Next, this is the first item I was referring to. So the original agreement with GDOT for the North Loop project was signed in 1999. This is an updated, uh, agreement with them to add, like I said, the reimbursement for the roundabout engineering that we will be, but, that we will be paying out of pocket for. They'll reimburse us. At this time, the cost that they have given us is $477,832.39, which you can see there. And this was the item that was added to the budget during our revisions in January. So 503,000 has been added to the expense. Like I said, we would pay that out. We also added 503,000 of the revenue because we expect the reimbursement. Uh, they did let us know that these roundabouts are scheduled to begin April 20, April of 2017, which is right around the corner. Um, this pushes the let date out from, for the North Loop bypass project from April 2018 to April 2019.
Just for the public, these two roundabouts, one of, they're both at the, uh, ends of the, uh, north bypass. Uh, one of them at the end of Industrial Boulevard, 101 Rockmart Road, and the other one on 61, for the public. So what happened to the roundabout at Pumpkin Town Road? It was supposed to already been done.
That's not, that's not the one we're talking about, though.
I know.
He's just asking.
It would be nice to know what happened to that one, though, because I haven't heard a thing.
Yeah, that was supposed to have been done.
And it was supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rapid response or something.
I'm not sure about that.
You have an update on that?
Can anybody find out where that roundabout got lost?
I gave Elise a, a copy of the diagram for each one, if we can see it. So this is the one at 101 and Rockmart Road. So on the left, you can see that's Industrial Boulevard and intersecting with Rockmart Road. And so going straight on would be the new, the new bypass up at the top. Now at the left.
Will they be waiting until they get the bypass in before they put that roundabout in, or will they put it in and just leave that open?
The roundabouts will go first.
And it'll just go to nowhere when you head, when you head north, it'll go no, northeast, it goes nowhere.
And you said that in April 2017, is that both of them will both begin at the same time?
I may have to defer at this point.
Rick, if you would, come up. State your name and, uh, the company you're representing. The most of you know, of us know yet.
Yes, my name is Rick Gurney. I'm with Kekinwood. We're the, the, of the bypass. And this is a change in the project itself. Instead of doing signalized intersections at these two locations, it'll be a roundabouts. So it, you'll, they won't just do the roundabouts and then do the rest. It's all be done as one big construction project, the entire round, the entire bypass.
Rick, since you're an engineer, I'm gonna ask you the question. Um, I received probably a half a dozen complaints over the last two weeks on traffic, especially at Industrial Boulevard, right there at 101. And there's several places in the city that that's bad, but that's definitely one of them. And, uh, from an engineering standpoint, tell us the rationale behind using a roundabout as opposed to a stop sign or a traffic lot?
Well, Grant is the roundabout expert in this room. Uh, it, uh, keeps traffic flowing, but in general, Grant can probably tell you why he wants to put a roundabout in.
You may have to get real close to that microphone. I don't think it's picking up really well.
Stick it up and hold it.
I'm Grant Waldrop with Georgia DOT. Um, the reason we prefer roundabouts is primarily from a safety perspective. We see about 90% fewer fatalities in roundabouts compared to traffic signals. They also tend to have less delay, especially during the, the margins of the peaks. Um, so while it, it may have slightly more delay than, than a, a large traffic signal in the absolute peak periods, these are still very small delays and it creates very minimal delay during the off peaks. Whereas at a traffic signal, you're waiting on the light to cycle around. At a roundabout, you just look in the, in the circle. If there's nobody coming, you yield, uh, you enter the circle and continue on your way.
Since you're, since you're the expert on roundabouts, maybe you can tell us what happened to the missing roundabout at Pumpkin Town Road?
I'd be happy to. Um, that roundabout, as you know, 61 has very tight right-of-way. That roundabout was gonna require additional right-of-way. The project is still there, but it's pending the acquisition of miters, the, the little corners, um, at the roundabout. It can't be constructed without them. And there's some delay in delivering the project until that issue is resolved.
How much delay do you anticipate?
How much delay? It, it's unknown. It's, we have to resolve the right-of-way issue.
Who's resolving that?
I know a little bit about that. I think there are three parcels that have to be obtained. And I know David Milleran was working on getting two of those and I was supposed to be working on getting one of them. And I, I think it's progressing, but I, I can't give you a specific date as to when those people will sign off.
Okay, we're limbo on right-of-way.
There had been some discussion before that those might be too close. Is that, that's not gonna be an issue?
They're very close. They are.
They are very close.
Two roundabouts would operate better than two traffic signals that close together, but they are too close.
Thank you. I, I think there's a lot of misinformation about roundabouts and, and my sort of general response to people, nobody knows how they work, but they just sort of work, sort of like a microwave, so.
We tend to get a lot of resistance to roundabouts until we get the first one installed in an area and then they become very popular. Um, nearby in Carrollton, uh, we got a lot of resistance to install in the state Route 16, uh, roundabout near the jail. Since we've installed it, they've come to us with a lot of locations that they would like to have roundabouts. They become very popular once you, you get accustomed to using them. And they're very surprising how much traffic they can put through.
Thank you.
Those people that wait in line every day trying to get to work and get home from work would be happy to have something that moves traffic. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Not on that.
The next item goes hand in hand. This is the agreement with Kekinwood, the updated agreement for them, for the engineering. Again, this is the amount that would be reimbursed by, by GDOT that we were just referring to, 477,832.39. And again, this was in the budget. We budgeted 503,000 of expense and 503,000 dollars for revenue. Any questions on that?
Questions? This is a reimbursable, you know, will be completely 100% reimbursed by GDOT. Thank you, GDOT. Questions?
Makes it easier when it's reimbursed.
Thank you, Sarah. Tab B, human resources. Ms. Rooks?
Good afternoon. Um, first thing that we have on the agenda is...
Can't hear you.
Sorry.
There you go.
Okay. The first thing that we have on the agenda is the city manager job description. I'm assuming you've all have had a chance to review it. Um...
I don't think anybody has it.
I don't have a copy.
It was in the email that I sent Sarah with all the, the tabs and everything.
I have a copy if you wanna make copies. Copy of the previous posting as well.
Hey, chief, how you doing?
One for everybody.
Why don't we move on to, yeah, let's move on to tab, I mean, to item two.
Item two, B2.
Okay, this is the, um, the sick leave without pay policy. This is actually an extension of FMLA. Our FMLA policy states that if you are not able to come back to work after you've used your 12-week allotment, that you can request leave, additional leave, if it's medically necessary, documented by a physician. Okay? This actually puts limitations on that leave. Um, it's, gives you an additional 12 weeks. After that 12 weeks, if you are still not able to return to work with reasonable accommodations, at that point, the city has the right to terminate you. This has come up because in the past year and a half, we've had two employees who have been out for a very long extended period of time. One was over a year. He was out on workers' comp. And the other one was out for about nine months. We were still paying their portion of all of their benefits, including their health care. So that exposes the city to a lot of debt. It also exposes the city to a, if you remember, our insurance premiums went up so much because of our experience rate. So while they're out, being disabled, they're still using our insurance, which can have a detriment on our premiums for the next year. So this would limit their, like I said, their total time out for six months. If they cannot come back to work after that six months, then we have the right to terminate them and fill their position permanently.
Okay, I, I have a question. It, the, uh, what you provided us, what is that, the present policy?
No, this is the proposed policy.
Okay.
The only thing that the FMLA policy says at this point is that you can, you can request additional leave. It does not give a limitation.
So the two employees that we're talking about, did they request additional leave?
Yes.
And it was approved?
Yes.
By their department head and by the city manager?
Yes. Well, we didn't have a choice. One was out on workers' comp. And the other one, he had medical documentation saying that he needed to be out.
Okay.
Also saying here that we weren't receiving any communication at all from them?
We were not. So even after I reached out to them several times, they, they would not return my calls. I sent them certified letters. Some of them were signed for, some of them weren't. So...
David, have you ever had a chance to look at this?
I had, excuse me, I have, and I'm familiar with the situation she's talking about. And I think this is probably a good policy. There may be an occasion when you have, that you'll wanna make an exception to it, but the general rule ought to be that we don't have it.
So, just to clarify, though, the law requires 12 weeks.
Correct.
You're proposing that we allow an additional 12 weeks upon request and subject to some verification, uh, from a doctor, I guess?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
So there's two pages, two pages on you.
Mr. Jackson, we certainly don't wanna leave you out either. Feel free to step up to the mic and...
Shut, and my eyes and ears open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Any more questions of Stephanie on, on the item two? Okay.
So what you're saying, though, is that after the 12 weeks, with the doctor's note, they can be out another three months?
With the approval of their department head and the city manager.
Okay, just a second. Thank you.
Yeah, the law states that we have to either, after 12 weeks, they have 12 weeks to either come back to their specific job or to a job of equal pay and benefits. So after 12 weeks, we're not required to hold their job, but we're trying to make it easier for employees to come back to full employment. Do you wanna move on to item three and go back to one, once you've had a chance to review it?
It's okay with me.
Okay, item three is the proposal to allow our permanent part-time people to be paid for holidays based on the average number of hours they work each day. Okay? We have employees in City Hall who work for four hours. So what would happen on a holiday, right now, they don't get paid anything. This proposal would allow them to get paid for four hours while the city offices are closed. This is not sick leave, this is not vacation, so there is no long-term liability to the city. Um, it's just holiday pay. So when the rest of us are enjoying a day off with pay, they're enjoying a day off without. So I'm, I'm proposing that we allow them to be paid for the holidays based on their work commitment.
I'm sort of surprised that this hasn't been the policy all along.
It has not.
Uh, I've never worked for a company that didn't do that for permanent part-time employees.
I have not either.
I've reviewed that and I think it's, uh, perfectly sound.
I do have a question. I think most of these are probably in the Recreation Department. Uh, what would happen for those, uh, part-time, permanent employees that work on holidays?
The way it works right now for your permanent full-time employees is they get paid for the holiday pay and any hours that they work during that holiday. So I would assume that it would be the same.
Probably need to do more than assume on that one. I would just need to make sure that's part of the, because I know, uh, in the Recreation Department, several of those employees work on holidays.
Right.
And which was no problem in the past because they didn't get paid for that day.
Right.
But now, what you're saying is they would get holiday pay, eight hours plus the time that they work.
Plus whatever they worked that day, yes.
Well, it may not be eight hours.
It'd be based on hours.
Whatever their hour, whatever their hours they would normally work.
Correct.
Would be there.
Whatever hours they work.
How many, um, what, 17 or 19 permanent part-time?
I think we're up to about 20 now.
Okay. Thank you.
Are most of these, um, employees about 30 hours a week or something?
Most of them are between 20 and 28.
Okay. Let's undo that.
Right.
How many are we talking about here?
About 20 people.
Can we, uh, David, between you and Stephanie, can we make sure we have that little detail worked out? Because it will come up very quickly.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Thank you for finding that and letting us know about it.
Okay, let's go back to, uh, item one.
This is, um, the position announcement is basically a direct replica of the job, now, the job description with a few omissions, basically the, the type of work, the complexity, the supervisory responsibilities and things of that nature. Um, the main thing with the posting is how long do you want it posted? Um, uh, you know, what do you want the salary range to be, or do you want it to be left off with commensurate with experience? What I proposed is we leave it open until filled, saying the review begins immediately. Okay? Um, the salary range from 92 to 120, that's your, your starting salary, that's...
What was that again?
92 to 120.
120, sounds reasonable.
Okay. And one, one addition to the qualifications, that city manager experience is highly preferred.
I would wanna have some sort of salary range there. I wouldn't wanna leave it off.
I agree, because, you know, if you're looking for a position, when I was looking for one, that's the first thing I looked at.
Yeah, you wanna have a clue of what your pay is.
From a practical standpoint, if we leave it open until filled, how does that work?
We leave it open until we fill it and then we pull it down from all the sites that we put it on.
You might get somebody in late in the game, it might be worth it.
Somebody might lie at the last minute that, that you wanna consider.
Yeah. Say it again.
I said you might have somebody that, you know, right on the day before you're about to hire somebody, you get in a new application that everybody wants to take a look at.
A diamond in the rough.
You can, you can always interview people before the position closes. You just can't offer the position until the position is closed.
I guess the reason I was asking that question is, is, you know, this is a discussion item, I guess, is part of this discussion, I mean, is part of this, this, is, um, you know, I have spoken to some of you on the council about trying to vet the process of being, you know, having the city manager hired. Um, and specifically what I'm talking about is, um, we collect applications from any number of people. Um, then someone from Call Vincent Institute of Government or Georgia Municipal Association would take those all, applications and vet them based on their experience. They would check backgrounds on those folks and give us a smaller list of however many the council feels like they wanna look at. And, uh, those are the folks that the council would then interview. So that's why I asked the question about until filled, because you couldn't, obviously you couldn't do it, you know, if that's the will of the council.
Another point on that, Mr. Mayor, is our interim city manager, I know, has, has done that in a number of cities and is very good at calling down the, the field.
That would certainly save us some money if that, I just, um, you know, I feel very strongly that, you know, we need to eliminate subjectivity to the extent that we can. And, uh, Mr. Jackson, being an outside person, would certainly feel that. So that's the desire of the council. I just, um...
I'd personally rather keep it closer at hand than go to a GMA and wait on them to go through the list. They threw some out we might, might wanna look at.
Well, and I'll say this for, for Mr. Jackson, he, you know, having worked for the Call Vincent Institute of Government for 20 years, he certainly has those contacts and has that information at his disposal. So, you know, that's a plus, um, that we have in, in hiring him, so.
I think, um, the information as far as background check and that sort of thing is what we're looking for, probably almost more than anything. I mean, narrow it down, take the, out the people having, we don't wanna see anybody that has no experience. Okay. But I think a more thorough background check than we can do ourselves would be real helpful.
I think the experience that, that these two people bring to, that they've had in the past years, uh, bring, bring us to a point that, that we can rely on those folks, uh, to do what we're asking. I, I think we need to come up with an agreement on what we are asking as far as what... I, I think we need to come up with an agreement on what we are asking as far as what the, the parameters are, but I got confidence in both of them that when they give us a list of people, that it'll be as good as, as you go out and, and get somebody from the outside, and probably better because they better understand the needs of Villarica.
I think it's fair to say that we still would be using GMA for our pool, right? I mean, we would still list the position through GMA?
Yes, absolutely. I have identified some other sites that are untraditional for us to list them at, and that's ICMA, which is the International City Managers Association, posted on LinkedIn, as well as GMA, and then our website.
And would it be substantially, the listing, would it be substantially as, as I have here?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know how much discussion we were going to have about this today, but obviously, we don't want to see dishwashers. Somebody's thrown that out there before. But I do think we want to see a wide range of, of the kind of applicants that we get. I don't know how many we're expecting to get. I talked a little bit, Mike, about it today, but I also have confidence that the two of you can...
Right. Last time we posted, we got about eighty-five.
Eighty-five applicants?
Some of those were dishwashers.
How many did this council talk to?
I think I gave you ten or twelve.
No, we had more than ten.
You give us ten, and we brought them down to five.
Really? I could have sworn I had like four.
How many of the eighty-five did you throw away? I'm sure there was some throwaways, Starbuck.
Seventy-five.
Were they all dishwashers?
There was a lot of dishdiggers.
Let the record reflect, we have nothing against dishwashers or dishdiggers.
Except as a city manager. Otherwise, please take care of the dishes.
Teachers.
Policemen.
Waffle House cooks.
Policemen.
Police officers.
No disrespect.
So, you know, the ones that, they're just unreasonable. You know, if you've had two years of experience at Waffle House and three years at McDonald's, I mean...
That's probably not going to do it.
Right.
So David, basically, what council needs, I mean, staff needs is just direction. This really doesn't need to be on the agenda.
I don't think so. I, I think Mr. Jackson and myself, you know, with input from any of y'all, we can pick out the places to advertise it. This is the, I mean, I think we did want you to see what the, the listing was, was going to be so that you'd agree with it, but it's pretty standard. There's nothing magic about this.
So conceivably, we could, y'all could get together and we could get this posted pretty quickly, as early as maybe Monday.
And I will say, from the la, the last time we went through this, we did get in a wide range of applications from people all the way from the Carolinas to, remember one from Nebraska, so the word gets out.
Yeah, Florida.
Southern Florida. And then we would, how would we do the interview process every?
Typically, once we narrow down the, the pool, then you would, Stephanie would schedule times to, to interview them.
And last time, we did it over at the hospital in one of their training rooms.
Would we do it like we did last time, take the ten, the council looks at the ten, picks out their priority, prioritizes their numbers the way that fit best five, and whoever comes out on top is the ones we interview?
Yes, sir. Or we could even get it lower than ten, you know, give you three to five.
I think we only interviewed about five, didn't we? And I think we did the process of putting a priority on them, and then whoever came out at the top ranking is the five we took.
And we had one, one or two that Skyped in. We had one, and then we eventually had him over personally, too. There's a very nice conference room in the library now, but because it's glass, it doesn't have, if confidentiality...
As long as they can't hear.
Isn't an issue, yeah. We could use our own facility.
We could use our own facility versus going over to the hospital.
One question that I've had raised on numerous occasions is, you know, can we create a portion of the process, pardon my voice, but can we create a portion of the process so the public can be involved in the selection process? And the, the problem with that is, as it relates to the Open Records Act, because there is a special exception to the Open Records Act that says that job applications do not have to be provided under the Open Records Act, and many of these applicants don't want their names getting out initially because they already have other jobs, and they don't want their employers to know that they're applying for our job. The qualifier to that is that once we get down to the final three people, those people's names are subject to being publicly given out. And you go to that person and say, "Look, we're about, you're one of our final three. We're gonna, we're gonna publicly name you as one of our final three. Do you want, is that okay with you?" And if they say, "No, I don't, I want to back out," then we back them out and put in another third person till you've got three people that are, are willing to be considered as the third, as the three finalists. So I'm trying to figure out a way that maybe we can build in, once we get to that point, some way to have some type of public input or at least understanding as to what's going on. So I'm sensitive to the requests that have been made, but there are some, some problems on just having, throwing out two hundred resumes and letting everybody in town take a look at them. We can't do that.
It's going to be hard to throw out three names and have a lot of people have some input. It'll take us a while to go through the input if a lot of people want to give input.
Ultimately, that'll be a decision of this council as to what you want to do, but I did want to at least raise that. I've had those questions. I'm aware of them. If we can figure out a good way to do it, we will do it. If we can't, you'll decide not to.
Mike?
I, I hear what Mr. McLean is saying, and I agree with it, but I think we need to keep in mind that, at the end of the day, the decision is yours. Public input and all that's great, but the, you can't let go of the decision-making. You can't give that to somebody else. It's your decision to make, and at the end of the day, you're in charge, and, and so... And on another quick thing, you remember when we were talking before I came here that I had expressed the interest in sitting down with each of you one-on-one and getting your input as to really what kind of person do you want to fill this job? And I, I, this is only my fourth day, and I haven't really gotten around to, to getting that done with you, but I would ask you to please begin to think about what kinds of skill sets, qualifications, experience, and all of that sort of stuff that you would like, just so that as I talk with each of you, I can get the, a good consensus of what all six of you want, so that that information will inform the choices that Stephanie and I make as we go through and make this initial cut and come up with a final, however many it is that we send on to you for your decision. So let me just ask you again, start thinking about that, and when we get together, I'd like to know what you think and what, what you're looking for.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Stephanie, is it clear as mud now or what?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
It's as simple as that.
Well, I think we'll all individually be in touch anyway, so it's not that difficult.
So this will not be on the agenda next Tuesday then? Somebody's mic was...
It decided how it is now.
Yeah, no. There's got to be a better mic than that.
I've got a karaoke mic that's better than that.
I do, too. Of course, it may be the user.
But that, that's a pretty bad mic.
Tab B, no, I'm sorry, tab C, Economic Development, Chris Pike, PowerPoint man, extraordinary.
Said none today.
I have good news and good news. Good news.
Like that.
No PowerPoint presentation today?
Yes. And the good news?
I won't be asking for a lot of money today.
That means we won't be considering a lot of money.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. How are y'all this afternoon?
Thank you.
We have three agenda items. The first one is hopefully very simple. We have two unexpired board positions on the Main Street Advisory Board that need to be filled. We did a little bit, we did a little different process this go around. We did bring everybody in that applied, gave them a work plan for Main Street, some of the workload that happens in Main Street, and then we allowed them to decide whether or not they still wanted to be included. Unlike a lot of our other boards, Main Street is not just a meet one hour a month type board. It's a working board, and it does require a lot of time from our board members, and so we thought it was fair to kind of explain to them what it is exactly we do so they know what they were getting into. After we did that process, we took all the applications to the Main Street Advisory Board, and they made two recommendations of people to fill those expired terms, and those are listed in your packet. These are folks that we think will be a good addition to the board and will help us continue the momentum that we started last year and a half, half a year.
I guess the basic question is, do you want them on the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, make a motion, accept them.
And you'll do that on Tuesday night?
Sure, I will. Uh, can we, can we do that off consent agenda? We have to make...
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm just glad y'all took the time to bring them in and know what, so they know what they're getting into.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that way, you get people that are better, better fit for the job and ready for it, though.
Item two.
Item two, as you all are aware, we have an agreement with the Downtown Development Authority to manage tourism part of hotel motel tax. That entity, as part of the agreement, is to submit a budget to the council for information purposes so we can see how the money is being expended, and that is just information for you all. I've put the budget last year and then the one proposed for 2017 and how the monies would be expended and in which categories. And if you will see, we've actually added a line from advertising for leisure and sports marketing. We have been meeting with different individuals to really put a lot of emphasis on sports marketing and...
Berlin. Thank you.
Sports marketing, but the, the reality is, we have phenomenal facilities in Villarica, some of the best in the state, and they're extremely underutilized from the standpoint of bringing people in to do tournaments and things of that nature. So we think that this will help us go out and not just say we have these facilities, but actually put in formal bids to brain tournaments to...
We got one vote.
Well, we just got through with a state basketball tournament past weekend.
We did.
So how many rooms did we fill?
Uh, there were eight teams. None from, only six of them were from out this area.
That's why I'm saying down in Carrollton, some of those athletic events.
Where?
Carrollton, you know, our county seat. You know, filling up the rooms, but just real quick on this, because I know we raised the tax and I was the only vote against it, but you got to make sure your motels are a place somebody wants to come back to. And I had a constituent recently have need to be put up in a local motel and mentioned the conditions. I won't get into it right now at one. They ended up at a different one, but what I'm saying is, if people aren't going to want to stay there, it doesn't matter how high the tax is, if the room smells and the carpet's dirty and there's toilet tissue on the little, you know, fire sprinklers. So I don't know how we address that.
It's called Holiday Inn Express.
Sounds like you did get into it right now.
But how we encourage our business people to keep their place up or whatever?
One of the things that we've done to really address that, because that was one of the main things, even when I came here to interview, I, for the job, I stayed at a local hotel and experienced that same thing. One of the things that we've done is put together this Tourism Advisory Committee that will advise on how resources are to be expended by the, by the CVB, if you will. There'll be representatives from the hotel industry on that board. That'd give us an opportunity to engage with them and have dialogue and conversations. And a non, you know, well, this is, because when we pull up and we got city seal on the car, I think we're coming to collect taxes and do an audit, so they don't really talk to us when we show up. So...